... fibroids and pelvic pain, dedicated to minimally invasive surgical techniques. Virginia G Y N dot com.
Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on W V T F Roanoke, W R I Q Charles City, Richmond, W U R V Richmond, W V T U Charlottesville, W V T W Charlottesville, W V T R.
The 2:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council for November 15th, 2021 is hereby called to order, and I will ask our Clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Bitch?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here, and I call him as president. I will be delivering the invocation and also leading you in the Pledge of Allegiance this afternoon, so if you will join me, stand and bow your heads as we pray. Eternal God, our Father, we come to you today first and foremost to say thank you. Thank you for all the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us because we recognize that all blessings come from thee. And Lord, we ask you to look down on our community, Lord, and touch those families who are bereaving today as a result of accidents, violence that have occurred. Let them know that you are still in control, and we give you praise and honor. We ask you to guide and direct this council and the appointed officials as we take up the business of this community. And we thank you, and we ask you to give us the guidance to do those things that are pleasing in your sight. And Lord, we be sure to give you all the praise, honor, and glory that's due your name. It is in your Son's name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome everybody to our session, the second session for the month of November, and I trust that everyone has had a good weekend and look forward to a blessed week. Please note that council meeting will be televised live and replayed on RBTV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/RoanokeVA. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. Announcements for the City of Roanoke. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for the following current vacancies and/or upcoming expiration of terms of office. The Roanoke Civic Center Commission, one vacancy. The Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates, two vacancies. The Roanoke Valley Regional Cable Television Committee, one vacancy. The Touring Advisory Board, one vacancy, and thus a citizen at large. The Youth Athletic Review Board, we have three vacancies. And for any of these vacancies that I've just mentioned, you can access the city's homepage to complete an online application, and you can contact the Clerk's Office also, and they will guide you through this process. It's not a complex process, as many things are complex. This is one that's very, I think, easy to do. And we, as a council, welcome all applications for those of you that want to serve on a board or commission. So it's important because we, as a community, relish having citizens to serve, to be a part of, assist us, rather, in helping us govern this great, Southern time, all-American city. Let me make an announcement. The Legislative Committee meeting scheduled for, is scheduled for 3:30 in the council chamber with Councilmember Best Bitch will be presiding. All right, we're now down to the portion of our agenda that's where we make presentations and acknowledgements. And we have some awards that are going to be presented to the Department of Parks and Recreation, and I'll call on Michael Clark, the Director of Parks and Recreation, for recognition of the following awards. Hey, Michael, I'll join you down there. Michael, I'll just turn this over to you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Members of council, thank you for having us today. You know, one of the things that our former Director of Parks and Recreation, Steve Bishore, used to really impress upon us is the importance of hiring the right people and surrounding yourself with successful people. And I feel like that's what we've been able to do over the last several years, and certainly through the pandemic and having to pivot in how we offer programs and services to the general public. Our folks worked really hard to accommodate as many people as possible and were recognized here recently for doing just that. So at the most recent annual conference of the Virginia Recreation and Parks Society, our department was awarded three separate awards. One was for the Best New Special Event, which was a prohibition party at the Fishburne Mansion right before the pandemic started. The second was for Best New Program, which is our Junior Ranger Program. And then the third was a Distinguished Private Sector Service Award, and that was awarded to Star Hill Roanoke. So we've got some members of our staff here with us today. Cindy McFall, she's now our Parks Manager, along with Lauren Woodson, who's our Community Recreation Coordinator. Cindy used to work in Community Recreation when this program was taking place, so she and Lauren worked together on this particular program. Cindy has since moved into the Parks Manager position. Patrick Boas, our Recreation Manager, he developed the Junior Ranger Program and initiated that with our Youth Development After Recreation staff.
Michael?
Yes?
Let me ask Susan, come around here. Get on the camera, let citizens have a council seat. Come around as you call her name.
We have Alex Connor, who's the General Manager of Star Hill Roanoke, and then Stephanie Long is our Marketing Coordinator. So Stephanie and Alex have worked pretty closely and, over the last several years, Star Hill has been a tremendous partner to our department. They have offered promotions to help support the park system and encourage people to, you know, live an active life and to support our efforts to, you know, really build a welcoming community through play. So thank you all for allowing this opportunity to recognize these staff, and we're very fortunate to have them. Thank you.
Hold your plaques up. The war is up.
Michael, can you step back?
Yes.
All right, hold those plaques up.
Oh, on the side?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, here we go. Are you smiling?
Yep.
Let's get them a hand. Counselors, members, if anything you all want to say?
Congratulations.
That's great work.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, man. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're now down to the item of hearing of citizens upon public matters. City Council sets this time aside as a priority for citizens to be heard. If deemed appropriate, matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to the council. All right, do we have any that have signed up this morning?
We have one speaker. That is Mr. N.J. Kilby.
All right. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Lee, council members, and others. My name is N.J. Kilby, and I live at 129 Norfolk Avenue Southwest. My neighbors and I live in those colorful warehouses that are close to the Big Rocket at the Transportation Museum and directly beside the southern end of the Second Street Bridge. I'm here today because we need your help, and we're asking for your help in finding a realistic solution regarding the unsheltered people who frequently camp right outside our front doors beneath the bridge. I spent a huge chunk of my life savings to renovate my warehouse, and for these past six years, my neighbors and I have had no experiences with any homesteading beneath the Gainesboro Bridge. Well, that all changed this year, starting around May, when a man set up a tent there. It didn't bother us at first. He seemed harmless and quiet and fairly tidy. We figured he'd eventually leave. He didn't leave. Over the summer, he began hoarding furniture and other random items. A number of lady friends followed, sleeping presumably inside and obviously outside the tent. Eventually, other tent dwellers moved in beneath the bridge. At one point by late summer, we had four tents and as many as 10 people right outside our doors. So why should we care? It's because my neighbors and I do have a sense of humanity. The citizens in our little row are highly compassionate. We care about the health and safety of the unsheltered, as well as our own health and safety. No one should be living outside, even in a semi-permanent dwelling, especially in freezing temperatures, without access to clean water and toilets. We're perplexed as to why the city, by way of the homeless assistance team, is providing tents without providing an adequate place to pitch the tents and without providing access to running water and toilets. We understand that some shelter is better than no shelter, but Band-Aid solutions are not realistic, long-term solutions. Meanwhile, we, the nearby homeowners, are involuntarily forced into the role of caretakers and monitors. We are the ones who have had to call the RPD dozens of times because of suspicious and illegal activity, loud noises, or outright brawls. We are the ones who have had to install security cameras. We are the ones who've had to clean up garbage and discarded food. We are the ones who had to call and report a fire when one angry tent dweller set ablaze a pile of his girlfriend's clothing. We are the ones who are kept awake when the folks outside our doors decide to throw raucous tailgate-style parties. Our friends and family, nearby renters, and the general public frequently use the parking spaces under the bridge. No one feels comfortable parking there when there are homesteaders just three feet away from their vehicles, and especially not after dark. We've witnessed items thrown from tents hitting parked vehicles. Eventually, we found out why the original tent dweller, who lived under the bridge for some four months, seemed so tidy. According to the man who owns a nearby apartment building, the tent dwellers were placing their defecations into his trash and recycling bins. Later, open-air defecation was evident. My neighbors, who have security cameras, recorded one individual defecating behind their home and actually on their home three times in one night. These neighbors did swear out a warrant against this individual and found out that he's on probation for stabbing someone in Charlottesville. A recent article in the newspaper seemed to focus more on a heartwarming love story between two unsheltered people rather than describing the reality of the situation. In reality, we're dealing with serious mental health issues, serious addiction issues, and in some cases outright criminals. And I see I don't have much more time. This problem is too burdensome and dangerous for us as homeowners to handle. We need your help. We've heard some talk that a new ordinance is being considered, which would make it unlawful to camp on city property, similar to prohibition on camping in city parks. If that's true, I'm here to advocate for that ordinance. The folks in our row have already had an in-depth discussion with our Community Resource Officer. We've been in nearly constant contact with HAT. We've talked to the V D H. We've even contacted A E P to try to set up replacements for the numerous burned-out street lamps all around us and around the Transportation Museum. Yes, we've had less of a problem since first frost, but that doesn't mean the problem has ceased or that it won't grow during the warm weather next year. So, thank you.
Well, if you have some further remarks, we have some time. You can continue.
Oh, well, I would like to say one thing, and that is, last month, my dear friend and neighbor spoke to you regarding this problem. He mentioned that literally every weekend and numerous weekdays, professional photographers are out in front of our homes taking photographs. They're using our row as a prime location for wedding photos, prom photos, and professional headshots. We see our warehouses featured in artwork at local art shows and showcased in marketing materials that welcome people to the city. Over the past few years, we've seen a beautiful transition take place. We now see families with baby carriages strolling out back. We see elderly tourists from out of town, bicyclers, skateboarders, folks on scooters and joggers. Our little neighborhood has become an attraction and an asset for the city, but that won't last if we can't find a solution. Already, the owners of a nearby apartment building have told me that prospective renters are turned off by the tents. The manager of a nearby business mentioned to me that they may not renew their lease because of the encampments. Yes, of course, we're worried about protecting the neighborhood we've built and all that we've invested in our homes, but we're also heartbroken that human beings are living on the concrete right outside our windows. So, we have any questions? Glad to try.
I would encourage you to, if you have time, to stick around because a little bit, in just a few minutes, we're going to be talking about the ordinance that you alluded to.
Oh, I'm so glad to hear it, and I'd be glad to stick around, and I'll be glad to report back to my neighbors about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And as the city manager stated for those that didn't hear, we do have some work that's being done, and we'll talk about that later in, on the agenda. Is that all, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that's all.
Okay.
The other speakers.
All right, item number four, which is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered There is a request for a closed meeting from the mayor's office to discuss the 2021 Citizen of the Year Award pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. All right, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Bitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved. Thank you. We're now moving to the regular agenda items, starting with item number five, which is public hearings. We have none. Item number six is petitions and communications. There's none. Item number seven is reports of city officers and comments of the city manager. And I'm pleased to recognize that city manager who will introduce our briefing this afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor Council, and the city attorney and I will be kind of tag-teaming this, so I'm going to set the sort of stage and give a little bit of overview and then allow Mr. Spencer to get into the details of the ordinance. I'll start this by stating that this is a briefing, so there's no action requested today other than answering questions and any other guidance that you might want to provide. We will be seeking action on an ordinance, on this ordinance, at your first meeting in December, and I'll talk a little about what will happen in between as well. This is a, in this particular case, this is an ordinance dealing with camping on public sidewalks and rights of way within the downtown service district. I want to start by saying that this is really one part of two, so there are actually, there is a second part of this as well, dealing with scooter placement on the sidewalks. That will come a little bit later, probably in the early spring. Both of these are, at their core, intended to try to address the need to keep as much of the sidewalks in downtown as free of obstacles and barriers as is practical, but there's much more to this, obviously, as we will talk through this. I think, actually, the gentleman that spoke earlier really summed up a lot of what the challenge is and what we're trying to do here, which is we're trying to balance in the city compassion for those that find themselves in a situation that has resulted in homelessness with the needs and the, really, the quality of life for the folks that are not only living in downtown but trying to conduct business in downtown as well and trying to strike that balance. The city has for long had a focus on trying to assist those that have found themselves homeless, for whatever reason that might be, with the central objective being that experiencing homelessness be rare and short in duration. So actually, as the gentleman mentioned earlier, it's really having a tent or living on, under a bridge is, at best, safe for a short period of time. It is not a long-term solution. It is not a safe solution for either the person that's there or for the community at large, for all the reasons that were mentioned. In many cases, we're actually really dealing less with homelessness as much as we are with mental health issues or addiction, and those have been the reasons that they find themselves experiencing homelessness. We have a very, and have had a very aggressive and very focused program to assist those that are experiencing homelessness with a variety of partners all across the region, and that has borne significant fruit. You all know this from our points in time count, that the number of folks experiencing homelessness in our community has declined dramatically since that benchmark year of 2012, more than 50% reduction from that period of time, and it is specifically because of the outreach efforts that we and our partners have in connecting people to services so that, again, it becomes very rare and very short-term. Unfortunately, we have seen an increase in folks that are actually both experiencing homelessness and sleeping out of doors, which is part of what has driven, I think, the number of complaints and issues that you've had brought to you as well. And so this is an effort not to try to criminalize, if you will, being homeless. We still will be approaching those experiencing homelessness with all of the compassion we have used all along in connecting them to services. Matt Cruikshank is here with the homeless assistance team, and I assure you, Matt knows by name, and his team knows by name, every single person that is sleeping out of doors and the particular challenge that they're confronted with and they're trying to connect them to those services. But again, this is an effort to balance the reality that our downtown district is a place that has a couple of thousand residents, a lot of businesses, and a lot of visitors that bring a lot of traffic into our downtown, and in effect, we need all of that space, and we also need, frankly, to avoid some of the issues that you've heard about because, again, it is not safe to have folks sleeping out of doors because we do not have adequate sanitation or other kinds of, other kinds of uses that are necessary to be able to accommodate that. So the ordinance that Tim will explain here in just a few moments is designed to do something that we cannot do right now. If you actually are camping on Market Square, we have an ordinance in place that says you are not able to do that, and so if that were to occur, we can approach that individual and tell the individual that they need to leave because of the violation of the ordinance, and that's why you don't see folks sleeping or camping on Market Square. The same is true for the Greenway on the bridge. We do get folks that actually sleep up on the bridge, and we do have through the ordinance that exists the means, again, to tell them it's a violation and they will move on. I'm unaware of anyone actually ever having received a summons or a fine for any of those activities. It really is an ordinance which allows us simply to gain compliance. We're not looking to arrest people or fine people. We're looking for compliance with it. I don't have that same, we do not have that same tool in place if someone is sleeping on a sidewalk or in a parking lot that the city has, or whatever it may be, because the ordinance does not exist. One of the reasons the ordinance does not exist because it is not an easy ordinance to craft to protect the rights that those individuals have, just like the rest of us have as well. And so this ordinance is constructed as narrowly as it can possibly be to achieve its intended purpose so that it is not overreaching. It is also coordinated with our missions and our shelters to ensure that we have adequate shelter space, which we do, so that folks do have access to other locations. And again, you'll hear a little bit more about kind of that construct and that narrowness, but I wanted to set that sort of stage as to what we're, why we're doing is and what we're doing, and then when Tim has finished explaining the words, I'll come back and explain what will happen between today and when we bring it back to you on December 6th for action. So, Tim.
Thank you. I believe Bob did an excellent job in giving a good summary. Each of you have a copy of the draft ordinance, which is being proposed. As Bob mentioned, currently, if you are camping on a city park right now, it is a class for misdemeanor, and one of the parks in the city is the Market Square. So if you, the proposed ordinance makes it a class for misdemeanor, the same to be camping on a sidewalk or public right-of-way, and we restricted it to the downtown service district. Now, why? Well, that's where the majority of the problem is. That's where our sidewalks are most congested because that's where most people live, work, shop in that area. That's where you're encountering this congested area, and we need all the sidewalk space that we can. Now, this is step one, because we're also having a problem with scooters being parked everywhere. We will be bringing that particular ordinance later to establish parking corrals, if you will, for these scooters, and we'll be working this winter with the owners of the scooter companies on how to address that, where these scooter corrals need to be and where they shouldn't be. On this camping ordinance, the definition of camping is taken originally from a United States Supreme Court case dealing with camping on the National Mall. There was prohibition of camping, so we use that definition. That definition was then used for camp, defining camping in our parks, and you'll find that definition of to camp here in this ordinance. Also, we followed, there's a case on point from the Virginia Supreme Court, not on point with camping on sidewalks, but on removal of with camping on sidewalks, but on removal of structures that are encroachments to public lands or rights of way, giving the locality authority to remove them. And there's one point in the Supreme Court case, Virginia Supreme Court case published in 1985, that said that they possess, an individual who encroaches on public rights of way possesses no inherent constitutional protection against municipal order for removal of the structure, a tent being a structure. So we think that we have crafted narrowly, crafted an ordinance to address the issue at hand, that we're also going to take other actions to make our downtown sidewalks accessible and safe. We're trying to do that. Anecdotally, we've heard stories of those with disabilities, having difficulty navigating around individuals camping and taking up our sidewalk spaces. So we, under the ADA, we owe them that duty to try to make our sidewalks safe and accessible. You have, will also see, and I'll read within the ordinance, we don't always put where as clauses, but I thought it was very important to articulate for the council as it considers this proposal next December, on December 6th, that we've received complaints. You heard it again today, that these complaints involve the camping downtown sidewalks and right of ways, as well as the unorganized storage of electric scooters. We've also verified and confirmed that there's sufficient shelter, shelter space to accommodate the housing needs for the city's homeless. Talk about the ADA. And finally, that the purpose of this is to provide that safe access to our sidewalks for our residents. As city manager mentioned, this is a balance. We are trying to work with our downtown community to ensure that they have that safe access while still addressing the needs for the homeless population. And Bob will talk a little bit more about his efforts to reach out and take care of that. Thank you.
And let me add one additional component to, to what Tim just mentioned as well. Obviously, for a variety of reasons, as Tim explained, this focuses on downtown. So let me explain for those folks that are thinking in one of our adjacent neighborhoods as to why not a similar rule in those areas. Actually, some of these already apply in those areas, and let me explain that. Obviously, regardless of where you are in the city, you're prohibited from camping in our, in our parks, so that already covers in those areas. Sidewalks in our residential neighborhoods are generally four to maybe six foot wide, which would themselves preclude anyone from camping on them, because all of our sidewalks are required to maintain a, an ADA accessible route on them. So that protection already exists. The reason you can't enforce it in the city in downtown is because the sidewalks are much larger, and so you don't have the same, you don't necessarily have the same inhibition on those sidewalks that you would in the residential areas. Where the residential areas experience challenges are when folks are actually camping on private property, which, of course, we then, at that point, need engagement and involvement with the private property owner. So if someone in one of our residential areas is either seeing those, seeing individuals camping out in those areas or their own property they're experiencing that, I encourage them to contact the, either our office, city manager's office, or the homeless assistance team, and we can kind of start explaining sort of that process for them as well. So the areas are just a little bit different, and I wanted to, wanted to mention that. Between now and December 6th, there'll be two stakeholder meetings. One of those will take place with the, the downtown business owners and property owners. This is being hosted by DRI, and we'll be there explaining this ordinance with them and for them as well. The second will be actually a stakeholder, this one will be virtual, that one will be in person. The second one will be a stakeholder meeting with the service providers that assist our HAT team and others in providing services for the homeless, and that is to make them, to continue to keep them aware of what we're attempting to do with the ordinance, and also assure them that we will continue working with them on connecting folks to the services. And they will help us actually get the word out as it kind of unrolls or rolls out if the ordinance should be a, should be passed. If the ordinance is passed on December 6th, then I would anticipate over the following 30 days, as I mentioned, Matt Kruichshank and his team know these individuals by name, so they will reach out to each person individually that continues to sleep out of doors, as well our other partners, to make them aware of the ordinance and what it will take for them to comply with the ordinance. So those, those things will be occurring between now and December 6th, and if approved, taking place after December 6th as well. That is what we wanted to share with you and wanted to be happy to answer any questions. Matt Kruichshank is here, should you have any questions about the homeless assistance team or the, just in general, homelessness, of course, then, you know, Tim and I can speak as well. I will say one last thing, too, which is, as we mentioned earlier, even though part two of this deals with the scooters, that, that ordinance is not being presented to you tonight, because it'll be presented later. It has not yet been crafted, because we still have some outreach efforts to do with the, the scooter companies as well, to try to respond and craft that ordinance as well. So happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding this myself or Tim.
Thank, thank you both, Bob and Attorney Spencer. I'm going to back to me or have the questions.
Yeah, I just have one quick question, and Matt may be able to answer it, but when, when they are given tents, the homeless assistant team issues the tents, are they instructed where they can pitch them?
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, Matt.
Yeah, good morning. Yeah, so we do encourage folks to go places that's least impactful on the community when we distribute tents, and we've scaled that back now during the pandemic. We were distributing more tents, because obviously there were health concerns with folks going into congregate shelter environments. So now we're just distributing tents to folks that have had permanent suspensions or service suspensions from our shelter system. And even then, it's only folks that we're actively working on housing solutions with. So at this point, it should be a limited number that the HAT team distributes tents for.
Oh, that's great. So there's just not anybody that comes up and you give?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to go wide down. Either way, both of y'all going to be here. I'll go counsel my best pitch, and y'all come up to you, Ms. Cobb.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I appreciate that, because I, I really want to kind of follow up on that just a little bit more, if I could. When you say areas that are less impactful, I, I may be not quoting directly, but I believe it's the gist of what you said, is where, where the HAT team is, is encouraging people who receive a tent to go.
We don't encourage any particular space. Our first conversation is shelter, obviously. Should we try to get folks into shelter as a first step? But in the limited situations when we do tent distribution, we just encourage them to go to areas that's not having a negative impact on the community, but we don't give them a certain location on where to go. And obviously, the park system is, their ordinance is involved there as well. So it's challenging, because the, the population we serve are really the hardest to serve of the hardest to serve that are unhoused. So frequently, they have mental health conditions, substance use disorder, criminal history, so they have a lot of barriers, and going into the shelter environment's a challenge. But all of our work with clients is try to get them back on a path into permanent housing, shelter first, but then permanent housing is really where the conversation goes from there.
Well, I, I understand that. I guess I'm, in my mind, when I hear that, Matt, what comes to my mind is a vacant lot that's owned by somebody.
Right.
But it's not, maybe in a high-traffic area, it's not necessarily very visible or whatever, but it is someone's property. And I suppose, in that case, that the property owner, if they're aware of it, can take some action to, based on trespassing on property.
Correct.
But I, it just concerns me a little bit that if we're going to provide tents to anybody, that we should have a designated space to tell them, here's where you can go, and as the gentleman said earlier, have access to water, clean water, and access to toilet facilities. You know, if we don't have that, then I'm not sure that giving somebody a tent with nothing else to go with it is really all that great an idea. But, but what we'd like, Bob, did you want to respond to that?
The only I was going to say is, we, we don't have anywhere like that.
Right.
And also, I would indicate, and I think, you know, Matt would concur as well, is, again, the idea of providing anyone with a tent is an emergency form of shelter, that that person's experiencing some kind of emergency at that moment and needs to have some modicum of shelter. To place someone in a tent for any, any length of time, even in an area that has access to water and sanitation, is not desirable. And so it really is, I mean, you know, we've said it multiple times about compassion. I mean, this is really an instance where it's like, absent this person being provided a tent in that moment in time, they're probably sleeping on a piece of cardboard, basically, is what they're doing.
Right.
So it is really kind of a last-ditch sort of effort to at least keep them semi-safe, but certainly not to make it any kind of permanent sort of housing. It's just not, it's not safe.
So today, there's an emergency situation. Someone has offered a tent. Are they told that we think this emergency can be addressed, resolved at some level, at least within 48 hours, 72 hours, or whatever? And after that time, we, we get our tent back?
No, what Matt and them will do is, they'll, they'll immediately be working, in many cases, even before there's a tent issued, with the individual to try to overcome those barriers. And again, in some cases, that's getting them identification, that's dealing with other kinds of issues to get them into housing. So as long as they're working with our folks to actually get them moved into either a shelter or into housing, then, then that's one course of action. If it's evident, and we have these folks out there, where clearly they have no intention or are unable to work with the HAT team to actually resolve the issue and move into shelter or move into permanent housing, those folks are not going to be, they're not going to receive the same kind of outreach efforts with us, because our goal is to get them into shelter and get them into housing. So it, it just is going to, it literally is on a case-by-case basis, and there's really, and in this case, you know, part of the reason for this ordinance is, one of the tools that we don't have is lacking, that, you know, in some ways, part of, it may be the last piece that Matt needs in order to say, you can't actually, if you've been sleeping downtown and that's what's keeping you from actually taking them up on one of their services, that option is no longer going to exist. And maybe that's enough to kind of prompt them to actually begin working with Matt and his team to actually resolve that issue.
So at some point, they could be told, we're, we're not going to continue to provide this tent, we're going to take the tent back.
I don't know that we would take it back, but we certainly would not be issuing any new ones.
Well, okay, you know, I, I just, when we talk about street, sidewalk, alley, other public rights of way in the downtown district, I think probably everything in that district is owned by the city, all, all the public property, because one of the lines of the district is the edge of 581. So one foot out of the district, you can be underneath the bridge of 581.
No, you cannot be under there, because we've already worked with BDOT to remove folks from under the, in that location, you cannot, because it's under state right of way, and the state can already remove you. If you go under there right now, you'll notice there's fencing put up. That's why there's fencing.
So the state already has the ability to remove anybody from?
Correct, we, we actually took that action with them maybe two years ago, I think, because there were folks camping up underneath there, and the state was able to deal with that in a way that we could not.
Well, I guess, I guess, I, I guess my real point here to all of this is that I think we need to be, keep a very close eye on this, because as Mr. Spencer said, this is where the concentration is now. I didn't, I don't think that means that there's no possibility that these folks are going to find a concentration spot somewhere else in somebody's neighborhood or whatever. So I just, I just ask that we keep on top of this and decide, you know, if there are other places, if we need to expand this down the line.
I think the, I think you're correct in that, you know, we have to be, we have to be very cognizant of if any of this moves out. The difference, I would say, is we have far more tools available in the surrounding areas than we do in downtown. Because, again, today, you could not camp on a sidewalk in a, in a residential neighborhood. You could not camp on right of way, you cannot camp in a park. So you're likely camping on someone's private property, and we have the ability to work with them on trespass to address that issue.
Right.
Downtown is kind of a unique in that we have some areas where that's not the case. But we still have to continue to be able to address that, because we are aware, in our surrounding residential areas, even with all those tools I just mentioned, we have folks that are camping, and it's usually because a private property owner is unaware or has not been able to take the steps that are necessary to, to actually address that.
One last thing. You've mentioned shelter availability. Nobody is outside anywhere, in a tent or otherwise, because there's not room in a shelter for them to go. I just want to make sure that that's out there in front of the public. Nobody who needs shelter can't get it, because the shelters are full. As Mr. Cowell said earlier, the numbers of homeless have been declining. For some reason, the number of homeless people who don't want to accept any help from the HAT team or anybody else seems to be increasing just a little bit, maybe. I, I know there are a lot of other resources besides just shelter that are also available, and I just wonder if you could take, you know, 60 seconds to just kind of give us a brief list of what other kinds of things are available to these folks, so that our, our citizens know that we're not just saying, go in the shelter. We're saying, deal with these other issues as well.
Yep, another Matt.
Sure, yeah, so we, we partner with Blue Ridge Behavioral Health Care for street outreach services for folks with severe mental illness, substance use disorders. We partner with them really closely for individuals that have those underlying issues to get those addressed as we work towards housing or shelter solutions. The same with the VA Medical Center, we partner with them on street outreach for veterans that are unsheltered, to connect them with whatever resources may be available through the VA. But then, on the housing side, we've got a partnership with the Rondock Redevelopment and Housing Authority. We instituted a homeless preference that's a part of their administrative plan with the Housing Authority back in 2018. So right now, we can refer anyone that's homeless to a voucher anytime when there's not a public application process. We have a coordinated process to connect folks with those housing options. I will say, one of the, the barriers we've run into is just, in the community, just a lack of general affordable housing. We've been able to connect a lot of folks with vouchers and those long-term rental supports, and even case management supports, but having units to put folks in has really been a challenge. So that's kind of what we're working through as a community. But the vouchers, there's permanent supportive housing, which are targeted to our chronically homeless folks. And then we have rapid rehousing, which is kind of a shorter-term, less intense intervention for individuals to exit homelessness and get back into permanent housing. So we, we use all of those resources as a community to try to move folks along towards permanent solutions.
And we even did that during COVID, that if an individual might have found themselves in a shelter or otherwise homeless, needed to actually isolate because of a COVID exposure or confirmed COVID, we also have been providing housing for them during that period of isolation, so that they were out of those congregate facilities and not out on the street as well.
Well, I, I just hope we can get that awareness out to some degree with our public. And, and in that regard, you know, as a retired social worker, I know what case management is, and I know what supportive housing is, but I'm not sure everybody knows. And what that means is that we don't just place somebody in an apartment somewhere or whatever and say, good luck. We have folks who stay in touch with them, who work with getting them jobs if they are able to take, to get a job, who work with the employers to try to resolve any concerns that arise once they are employed, before any disciplinary action taken, before they're, they're fired from their position. The case manager is very helpful in that regard, getting them to their appointments, making sure they take their medications, all those kinds of things. I just think it's important for people to realize that, that it's just a plethora of services available, and it's not on a one-time basis, it's an ongoing, permanent supportive housing. Means exactly that, permanent. So I, I just, it's, it's, it's an obvious concern. It's probably a bigger problem in other places than it is in our community, but it's big enough, and our response, I think, is more than adequate to deal with all these situations if people will accept the help. will accept the help. But if they, if they choose not to, it's very, very difficult, and I understand that. And Matt, my hat's off to you. I know it's a tough job, I appreciate what you're doing every day, and, and all of your staff, to try to deal with these situations. And I just, I wish you the best. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cowell. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? Mayor? Scott?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Bill, you, you asked most of my questions and, and opened up the information, but I, I did want to ask Matt if you could just, I think for the public's sake, we do have enough shelter capacity. Could you just give an overview of the current shelter programs we have?
Sure.
Because I think the priority is always to house somebody first. There was a shift in the last decade in homeless services to really focus on housing someone first and, and getting them the, the wraparound supportive services they need, whether it was mental health services or employment, if, if they're able to be employed, or access to disability, whatever those things are. And you've identified some of the barriers, but I, I think it's helpful to know that really the extraordinary partnership we have with our shelter facilities, if you could just talk about that.
Sure, yeah, so obviously, the largest shelter provider in the community is a rescue mission, so they've got a family shelter that houses families with children, and then they've got a men's shelter for single men. So that's the largest shelter space availability, available in the community. Trust House is an overnight shelter, they have a twenty-seven-bed shelter, fifteen are dedicated to veterans, they've got a contract with the Salem VA Medical Center for those fifteen beds, and then they've got twelve community beds at Trust House for non-veterans. Family Promise of Greater Roanoke is a, a family shelter that serves families with children. They've got space for about twelve individuals or four families there at Family Promise. And then there are a couple domestic violence shelters in the community. The Salvation Army operates a shelter for individuals that are fleeing domestic violence situations. And then Covington actually is a part of our continuum of care coverage area, so there's about a fifteen-bed domestic violence shelter up in Covington. So those are the primary shelter options in the community.
Thank you, Matt. And, and I think too, one of the myths that's out there is that we, and I've heard this on multiple occasions, I want to debunk it right now, is that the mission or other shelters go out to other communities with buses and vans and gather people up and bring them to Roanoke. That's simply not true.
Right, yeah, and the missions actually restricted their service area to just covering our continuum of care for allowing folks to come into their shelter program. So it's just Allegheny Highlands and the Roanoke Valley essentially that they'll even accept into shelter at the moment.
I do know that there are localities in the region that send people here because we have services here. And so that often adds to the, the demand or the, the challenge, if you will, because they're not necessarily folks who want to reside in Roanoke, but they're here to access services. Can you talk a little bit about how we work with other localities to address those challenges?
Yeah, that happens occasionally, and like I said, during the pandemic, it's been less frequent because of the mission kind of restricting who they'll take from outside areas. We do our annual point-in-time count, one question that we ask every year is, when you became homeless, what locality were you living in? And each year, it's pretty consistent, right, about forty percent come from areas outside of our community. And you're right, a lot of it's because services are located here in the valley, so a lot of the rural areas don't have shelter capacity to serve folks that are coming from those communities. So, but we still serve folks, try to work to get them back into housing or connect to supports in other communities if that's an option. So as a community, we still provide services to folks regardless of where they come from.
And, and it's also my understanding that you're, you're working, because you already have these established relationships with the shelters, you're working with them to address some of the barriers that people may identify, why they may not want to be sheltered? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure, yeah, so the mission, obviously, it's a congregate shelter environment, so they're rightly concerned about safety for folks that come into shelter and trying to keep everyone safe. So now they're doing a, just a basic health screening and a, a really rapid COVID test before folks get into shelter. They had, when cases were higher in the community, they had done a quarantine requirement, so folks would have to go through a certain period of time through quarantine before they'd be able to get into the regular shelter programs. But they, that's been scaled back, and they're looking at other barriers that may kind of prohibit or inhibit folks from accessing shelter services. So as a community, we're having those conversations to make sure that shelter is accessible to anyone that wants it.
And last question I have is, with winter months coming on, are there any, is there any kind of shelter expansion or different kind of access because of the, the colder temperatures?
Yep, so the, the mission, during the winter, they do what they call White Flag Night. So anytime the temperature gets below a certain level, they'll open a certain, an extra spot in the shelter for individuals to come in off the streets regardless of what their service status is or any barriers they may have. So they've activated that as of the first of November, so that service is available both in the men's shelter and on the family shelter side, so, and they have the ability to scale that up during inclement weather, so there is an option for folks to get off the streets.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Ms. Sanchez Jones, and then you come back to me if you want.
I don't know.
She's down there waving.
My question is, I would like to know the number of individuals that are living in tents, if you have an idea?
Yeah, so we do an annual point-in-time count each year in January, and then we do a summer count in July. So the most recent count we did was in July of 2021. So this past July, we counted about forty-four, I think, that were outside on that night in July. Typically, in the winter, we see less, a lower number of folks that are outside as opposed to in the summer, but the most recent count, we counted forty-four in July that were outside.
Seems to be a lot more than that.
Yep, and it depends on the weather and various factors, but yeah, that's, that was our most recent count.
And the year prior, you think, due to COVID, has it been less or more people out living in tents?
So we haven't seen a huge increase in unsheltered up until this past summer, so that's kind of when we started to see that increase. Early in the pandemic, we worked with Arch, who is one of our, they operate the Trust House. So we implemented a non-congregate shelter program starting back in April of 2020 that ran through June of 21. So we worked with folks that had high risk for COVID complications if they would get infected, that were on the streets, and we used those non-congregate shelter rooms, it was essentially a hotel, or two separate hotels that we worked out of to keep folks safe during the pandemic. And we had, at any given day, about ninety folks was the capacity in that program. And as Bob mentioned, we've also operated isolation space for folks that are either symptomatic and awaiting a COVID test results, or that are confirmed with a COVID infection to keep them out of congregate shelter and safe in their own rooms in a hotel. So those are a couple programs that we've been operating since the beginning of the pandemic.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any more?
Just one follow-up. So Matt, I just had one follow-up question, and, and really, this is, is for the community here also, because a lot of people are talking about the homeless and what we're doing. But I, I know that I met with you over the summer, and you have money and vouchers available for families who are clearly displaced. There's no mental issues, these are just families who've had some misfortunes, and there is money and vouchers, but we just don't have the housing.
Exactly, yep. That's absolutely the case.
Not, no affordable housing?
Right.
That's what ends up, certainly in the family part of the rescue mission, that's what ends up with those families in that shelter for an extended period of time, because even though they have access to vouchers for other housing, the housing is not there. So it's not necessarily contributing to the living out of doors, but certainly is contributing to some amount of folks that are backlogged, if you will, into the shelters.
Into the shelters, thank you.
Well, again, we will, thank you all for the, for the questions. We will, again, have those two stakeholder meetings, we'll be back here on December sixth with information that came from those meetings, and anything else that we've heard as well, and to be looking for action on the ordinance at that time. If you should have any questions in between, obviously, let myself or Tim know, we can certainly look to Matt for additional information as well, so, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on the items recommended for action, we're now at item one, which is the acceptance of a donation of the Kids in Parks Track Trail Kiosk Sign from the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
A resolution accepting the Kids in Parks Track Trail donation from the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation, authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute a memorandum of understanding among the city of Roanoke and Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation, outlining each party's responsibilities, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to take such further actions and execute such documents as may be necessary to accept such donation.
All right, is there any discussion among members of council? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bespin?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes, there is a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance, second.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Blue Ridge Foundation to provide Track Trail Kiosk Sign donation, amending and re-eradining certain sections of the 2021, 2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any discussion among members of council? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bespin?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes, thank you. Our next item, number two, is the adoption of a resolution naming the basketball court at Booker T. Washington Park in honor of the late Ricky Renell Wright. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you read the resolution in its entirety?
A resolution naming the basketball facilities of Booker T. Washington Park located at 1610 Beryl Avenue Northwest in the city of Roanoke. The Ricky Renell Wright Basketball Courts in honor of Ricky Renell Wright, former basketball standout at Patrick Henry High School, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to take such further actions as are necessary to include placing signage and/or plaques at the basketball courts, be it resolved by the council of the city of Roanoke as follows. One, in accordance with the policy of the city council established by Resolution Number 37976-121707, adopted on December 17, 2007, regarding the naming of city-owned facilities, city council hereby names the basketball courts at Booker T. Washington Park located at 1610 Beryl Avenue Northwest in the city of Roanoke, the Ricky Renell Wright Basketball Courts. Two, the city manager or his designee are authorized to take such other actions as necessary to name and identify the basketball courts at Booker T. Washington Park located at 1610 Beryl Avenue Northwest as the Ricky Renell Wright Basketball Courts, including placement of signs, lettering, and/or memorial plaque. Three, the city clerk is directed to provide a copy of this resolution to the family of Ricky Renell Wright.
Thank you. We have some people here that we want to recognize that are here on behalf of Mr. Wright, and I want to recognize them, and if they have anything they'd like to share with council, they can do that. Mr. Donnell Wood, and he was the individual who proposed naming the new basketball court in Upper Washington Park after the late Ricky Renell Wright. Ms. Dorothy Wright is here, I'm assuming she's here, all right. Mrs. Gail Wright is here. Coach Mickey Hardy, I don't see him.
He was, he, he had an emergency, him and Mark Grogan had an emergency.
Okay, and Mark Grogan?
He had an emergency as well, he had a funeral to attend.
All right, and as well as some members of council probably know Mr. Wright, and have some words to say, but thank you, Mr. Wood.
And I want to thank you all as well, you know, over fifty-some years ago, when I lived in Lincoln Terrace, the basketball courts were now being redone, which were all the children in the neighborhood played. This was one of the areas where Ricky actually started his basketball skills and matriculated through high school and on to Winston-Salem State. And I just want to thank Mayor Lee, Ms. White Boyd, and the rest of members of council, also city manager, because I think Ricky was a positive coming out of Lincoln Terrace. There's a lot of positive in Lincoln Terrace, and I just want to thank you all for that. And his mother's here, Ms. Wright, and his sister who graduated from me at Patrick Henry as well, she's here as well, I want to just say thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you for having, my son Ricky started playing basketball at the basketball court about six years old, and he could throw those balls as high as they were, he could make those goals, he stayed there, sometimes always playing by himself. So I think if he just hears that, he just passed away, and it would be a big honor to have that the court named after him. He played there for so long and did good at high school, excellent in high school, and in Western Sodom State University.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to thank all the city council, the mayor, Donnell Woods, Mark Grogan, Mickey Hardy, for even considering the recognition. I'm really proud and honored, and I'm sure that Ricky is looking down on us and thanking you regardless of which way it may go, to thank you so much.
All right, members of council?
Hi, Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you. I just want to thank Donnell for his suggestion and to honor Ricky with the memorial plaque at the basketball courts, which is actually, as they have said, across from Lincoln Terrace where he played ball. Many might not know that we grew up, my family, my siblings, we grew up with the Woods and the Wrights. We grew up in Hunt Manor, where as Donnell has mentioned, growing up in Lincoln Terrace as well as down on Beryl Street. And now they, his family lives across from the administration building. And we, it is my, it is in my prayer that this recognition of Ricky Wright, that hopefully would change the narrative in that area and cause some of the young kids from the Link, villages of Lincoln, as well as the surrounding neighborhoods, who have a similar love for basketball, to not let that, the environment define them as to who they are, but would want to be better and do better and work harder. Donnell and I, and his brother Dyke and Fay, and all of us, we are proof of that, that we don't, that the environment where you grow up does not necessarily define you. And I just want to say thank you, and that hopefully you'll stay active in the community in a positive manner and working toward changing the narrative. Thank you.
All right, any other members of council?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all, let's give All right, let's now make it legal. Let me ask the clerk to please call a roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bespin?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Well deserved, aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and congratulations, and that part of Washington Park, the basketball court, is now known as Ricky Renell Wright. Thank you. All right. Thank you all. Item number three is the appropriation of funds in connection with the American Rescue Plan Act, SLFF Municipal Utility Relief Program, to be used by the Western Virginia Water Authority to provide relief to eligible municipal utility customers. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you read this title paragraph?
A resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Roanoke and the Western Virginia Water Authority, authorizing the City of Roanoke, Virginia to act as fiscal agent to distribute the COVID-19 American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal recovery funds under the Municipal Utility Relief Program on behalf of the Western Virginia Water Authority, and authorizing execution of such other documents necessary to effectuate, deliver, administer, and enforce the memorandum of understanding.
All right, is there any discussion on this? I think this is a good thing, continue to do it. It provides relief for eligible municipal utility customers. By release, I think that's, that's good for the city. I appreciate the work, Mr. Cal.
And Mayor, by May, just in case folks are wondering. So my understanding in talking with the water authority is this is a little bit different than the funding assistance that was provided under the CARES Act in that the water authority will actually be, in effect, assigning the value to overdue bills. So this is not something folks are necessarily going to have to apply for or those kinds of things. They will be administering the program kind of on the back end as well. So if folks have questions about that, they can certainly contact the water authority as well because they'll be administering this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, can you call a roll?
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bespinch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. There's the budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the United States Treasury for the American Rescue Act, Rescue Plan Act, Corona Relief Plan Fund to provide eligible municipal utility customers financial assistance due to ongoing matters related to the COVID-19 pandemic, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2020-2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bespinch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Before I move along, Mr. Wood, let me thank you for attending the game Saturday, the Fayetteville State, the Bowie State Championship Game held at the Salem Stadium. I know you was cold as I was out there, but you had a Trojan, which is most people that don't know, that's Virginia State University's name, out there. And they really performed on Saturday night here in the city. And I wish we could have connected the two, but we'll do that next time. But it was good to see you out there. All right, I think we're now down to comments from our city manager.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, and I'll be as quick as I can with this. The, I think just about all of these are associated with the upcoming holidays and the holiday schedules. So just as a reminder, obviously, the city offices will be closed on Thursday, November 25th, and Friday, November 26th, for Thanksgiving holidays for our families or for our employees to be able to join with their families and friends along with the rest of the community. That, of course, affects our solid waste schedule. Unlike most of the time when we have a holiday, you'll see the schedule shift out a day. It shifts forward a day. So those that have, normally have trash and recycling, pick up on Monday and Tuesday. That will take place on Monday. Wednesday trash will take place on Tuesday, and Thursday trash will take place on Wednesday. So there'll be no pickup on Thursday or Friday. If you have any specific questions, you can certainly contact the solid waste folks. And there's information on the website as well. We will also be, as has been noted in a number of different areas, conducting the annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony on Friday, December 3rd, in its normal location at the Wells Fargo Plaza. That ceremony begins at 5:30 p.m. with the tree lighting taking place at 6:20. That serves as the official kickoff for the Dickens of a Christmas series, which is celebrating its 39th year and will include the Christmas parade on December 10th, weather permitting, of course, which is always a challenge, it seems. Along with that are, is the return of Elmwood on Ice. You'll recall that they were not able to have that. DRI was not able to do that last year. They are this year. That will open on November 24th, and it will also be accompanied by a putt-putt course adjacent to it. There's different ways to get individual tickets to tickets for the entire season for all of those. All of that information is available on DRI's website at downtownroanoke.org. And then finally, the city is collaborating with the United Way of Roanoke Valley to acknowledge ALICE Awareness Week. For those of you that are familiar with this, ALICE stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. So these are basically our, our employed folks in our community that really are not that well-paid. And so these are folks that we refer to as ALICE. And again, we're collaborating with them to recognize the efforts and awareness that United Way has in addressing the financial needs beyond the traditional poverty, federal poverty guidelines. These are very often folks that do not qualify. They're working, they make enough money not to qualify for any of the federal assistance programs, however, still are having challenges within the community. According to the United Way data, more than 29% of families in the Roanoke Valley are earning less than what it actually costs to live here. That's on top of the 15% of area families that are living below the poverty line in their, and this is region-wide, not just in the city. The community can learn more about the United Way's efforts in providing services and trying to assist in ways in which folks can help donate for those, those efforts as well by visiting the United Way's website as well. And those are my comments at this point. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cal. Any comments or questions for the city manager? All right, we're down to a briefing by our city attorney, and I'm pleased to bring forth our city attorney, Mr. Tim Spencer, who is doing some outstanding work. So, Tim, thank you for all that you do, and I will call on you to give us a briefing.
Thank you, Mayor. Our office has looked at the, at Chapter 21, Miscellaneous Offenses, which was initially adopted as part of the code in 1956. Needless to say, our society has changed a great deal since 1956, and a number of these prohibitions were better suited for a bygone era. So when we went through this, you'll see amendments, and I won't go into all the detail I did in my report, but I'll just give you an overview. They fall into three general categories of why we wanted to make the amendments. Some of these amendments or deleted sections simply don't reflect today's society. And I'll give you some examples when I go through those. Several of the amendments are made to better enforce the norms of police department. In other words, we want to go ahead and work with, if the police department hasn't been enforcing a certain city ordinance and instead uses state code to prosecute a certain violation, why do we want to clog up our code with that? Let's, let's have those provisions that are actually useful to the police department, to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. And then the last one was just those that we are using. State code changes a lot. So instead of having to track all those changes every year, we can come up with some standardized language which incorporates the state code as it currently exists or may hereafter be amended. So we've used that language. That'll keep our code in better conformity with the current status of state law. So let's go through some of these. Some of these that are being prosecuted under, under state code as opposed to our city code. Now, they deal with some, some things that, like prostitution and the support of prostitution, public intoxication, obscenity laws, unlawful exposure, and regulation of massage parlors are all better covered through state law rather than our city code. Therefore, we're eliminating these, or proposing that we eliminate them, I should say. We worked with the police department, and initially, one of the more humorous side events is the police department got this, and we sat around with the leadership team in the police department, and initially, they were like, well, we're going to have to keep, you, you've eliminated a lot. There's a lot of red lines through this proposed. They were like, well, after we were finished, we got rid of another five sections. They're like, no, we don't ever enforce this. We don't enforce this either. We don't enforce that. And then they shook their head and said, we thought we were going to have to fight you on some things, and doggone, we just need to get this city code pared down. So that's one section of what we're looking to do. The others are conditions amendment to incorporate city code. Those things that we do still enforce. Distribution possession of controlled substances, inhaling drugs or other noxious chemicals, shoplifting, requirement to wear a bike helmet, carrying concealed weapons, discharging of firearms. We still want those in our city code, but we want them to better comply with the state code. So we've made those changes by adding that language as currently cited in the city, in the state code, citing that code section as currently exists or may hereafter be amended. And finally, there are those things that are clearly out of date. Some of them are humorous. Fraudulent use of a payphone. I challenge citizens who are watching today to find your local payphone. We just don't need that. But there are other things that date back to that 1956, when councils and local governments might be more interested in what happens behind closed doors between consenting adults. We don't need to get into bedroom enforcement, is what I'll call it. So a lot of those things we take out. Others are constitutionally vague, such as abusive language. What is abusive language? Well, we've got a state code dealing with obscenities, so we can deal with that. But if we get, I don't want to put the city in a constitutional bind. So you'll see a removal of various types of that sort. Now, we've gotten rid of certain other things, but that doesn't mean you'll see lewd dancing, for example, was prohibited. We're getting rid of it, but that does not mean that that type of behavior is going to now become a business. In other words, we're not going to proliferate strip clubs. We've worked with our people in the planning department. Planning addresses that, where those can be. So we're fully protected. I just wanted to remove it from the criminal section. And I think that this will, in general, reduce our city code, and it will have those sections that we truly are enforcing and do benefit the safety, health, and welfare of our citizens. Here to answer any questions that council might have regarding these proposed changes.
Thank you for going through that, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. There are other sections that we'll be doing as well and come back and present when it comes to personnel ordinance working with the HR department. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number eight is reports of committees. A report of the Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriation of funds for various educational programs. And a report of the city manager recommending that council concur in the request. Donna Caldwell, Director of Accounting, is the spokesperson. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth, federal and private grant for various educational programs, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 school fund, school grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Any discussion by members of council? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bespinch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number eight B is a report of certain authorities, boards, and committees and commissions in which city council serves as liaisons or appointees. And I want to ask if there are any comments, and you all got to recognize that Mr. Bespinch is staring me down. The time is coming up. So I want to give you all a chance. In your comments, please consider that.
That's fair.
Are any comments on the work you're doing on with boards and commissions for members of council? All right, hurry now. Item number nine is unfinished business. We have none. An introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Item eight is a repeal and replace budget ordinance, adopted on November 1st, 2021, to correct a, if they were, Scrivener's error in connection with the acceptance of Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program funds from the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the City of Roanoke Flood Plane Mitigation Project. There is a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, read the title paragraph, please.
An ordinance to repeal and replace budget, budget ordinance 42192-110121 to correct a Scrivener's error and to appropriate funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency for pre-disaster mitigation grant for the City of Roanoke Flood Plane Mitigation Project to acquire and demolish the Ramada property and five residential properties in the floodway along Peters Creek, which is prone to flooding, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 general fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bespinch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. All right, any motions and miscellaneous business by members of council? All right, hearing none. I will move on in the agenda, and right now, I think it's time for us to have a recess, and we will first have a meeting of the Legislative Committee, and then following that, we will go into closed session to discuss the system of the year. All right, so we're standing recessed.
And, Miss Mayor, with your permission, can we take about a two-minute recess before we convene the Legislative Committee?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
(coughs)
(inaudible)
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 But she knows where to put it. She's out with him all the time. He's over there on most of his weekends. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But he's been around here for so many years and I just want to give him something.
We understand.
He just wants to.
I was in a great trip.
Well, thank you, Ann. And I got to run out. I got a family meeting at four o'clock. I've got some business we've got to do. I tell you, to get everybody together is a task.
Oh, that's like a hard one.
That's like hurting my hand.
It is. They be scaring me.
Erica comes from school.
No, I see him.
Sherman Junior's got a business. He's coming through again. Normally, I'm in council and I've got to run by and he starts at four o'clock. So I'm going to let the official.
I was trying to get somebody who had the perfect.
And I'll get back here for this afternoon.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do too. I appreciate that.
Okay. Because I was very serious.
If it does work out, I get back with you.
Okay. All right.
This is a gentleman of color, so I think it will help the balance.
Yeah. Okay. Well, if he does not, if he declines, then Mr. Shahid, I think he has already put in his application. Omar Shahid, on the toy advisory board. Yeah, he said he's got somebody in mind, but I say it doesn't work out. Consider Omar.
Omar, the smart guy. I've been doing this for years and come across this thing. I mean, he's taking the director of the town. All right. Let's share. What are we?
Do we be entertaining?
I may have to leave earlier for a four o'clock meeting. I'll be here, but I might have to stop.
If you have any commentary on this, keep an email. Oh, yeah, yeah. That's fine. Uh, I think Vivian is on her way back, I hope.
If you want to.
Okay. I'll order and ask our committee secretaries to call the roll.
Mayor Lee.
Here.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Here.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Here.
Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Jeffrey.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Ms. Smith. Dr. Jamison.
And let me just inform you that Ms. Smith and Dr. Jamison let me know that they would not be able to be here. They thought this meeting was going to be in the morning. Of course, we don't meet in the morning on the second meeting of the month. And they had something else with the School Boards Association that they're involved with this afternoon. Mon Kathy is going to try to get here. He had something else as well, but he thought he might be able to get that wrapped up or break away and join us. So we'll acknowledge him if he does make it in. And let me start with a couple of things that we are kind of in a, I guess, I feel anyway, kind of in an awkward position. We have these two items that we haven't put on the legislative agenda yet, or legislative program, that are scheduled now for a public hearing on December 6th. One of them has to do with the clerk of court, circuit court amending our charter so that more of that salary gets paid by the state and not by us. And then also amending it to change the election date for city council elections. I guess what I'd like to suggest, and Mr. Spencer, you can advise me if this seems out of order, but what I'd like to suggest is that we go ahead and consider these, with everything else, subject to the public hearing, acknowledgement of the public hearing. And when the public hearing happens, will we actually take a vote or will we just receive input?
Receive input.
Okay.
And then also input from our clerk of the circuit court.
Right.
Because this will require a budget amendment request.
Right.
Now, we are very lucky because guess, Ron Jordan, for years and years, represented the clerks association. So he's very familiar with this process.
Sure.
We are one of the three outliers, as he called it, who are still under the old system of keeping all the fees and paying all the costs.
Okay.
And so, want to make sure that Ms. Hamilton, I mean, that Brenda is in good order with everything.
Yeah.
I've worked with her throughout the process and I want to continue that process with her. So I will be reaching out to her again before the public hearings.
So let me just suggest to the committee that if, for any unforeseen reason, we decide after the public hearings that these should not be in, then I will make a motion to remove them from our legislative program. Otherwise, these will be part of it. I just hadn't put them in yet because we're kind of betwixt and between, shall we say.
Yeah.
As far as where we are, where we stand with those. So let's just jump into the other legislative priorities that we have. Number one, being the real estate lien status and priority for unpaid local solid waste collection fees in a manner similar to the lien for unpaid stormwater utility fees. I think we are all familiar with this. We've been discussing this for some time. And I don't think that we need to have any further discussion on that unless any member of the committee has a comment or question. Number two is to authorize localities to require retrofitting of buildings containing one or more dwelling units to install and maintain smoke alarms. I have note that staff, city staff is drafting language. Is that still, I haven't received it.
Yeah, I don't know if that's, yes, because we had it from a previous. I don't know if that's something, Tim, that your office is pulling together or something we need to get from the previous submission.
Previous submission, we can provide it if needed.
Yeah, because we had language drafted, I think, at the last general assembly session, I believe, so.
So you can get that to me, Mr. Spencer?
Yes, we can.
We'll add that in, that specific language. Three is to limit smoking designated areas and outdoor parks. Do we have language for that one?
I don't think we do on this one yet, so we'll have to get that.
We'll have to get it.
And I'll talk with Tim as to who's going to actually craft that. Because the previous language we had, of course, was designating areas for smoking, because that was in Elmwood. And so this will have to be an area on the other side of that, so we'll.
Be able to designate certain areas.
Yeah, limit smoking to designated areas.
Yes.
So it makes it clear that we're not saying you can't smoke anywhere. We're saying that designated areas will be identified, and if you want to smoke, then that's where you smoke.
Initially, didn't we start out with no smoking?
I'm sorry?
Didn't we start out with saying no smoking at all? Wasn't that the?
Nah, I don't think so.
Oh, okay.
I don't think we ever thought we'd get that through.
To get that, okay. That was just in my mind, I guess.
Does it include municipalities as well, or just?
Thank you, Paul.
You just said just recreation centers, outdoor programs, and sports fields. What about municipal buildings? Is that already?
Is this buildings? Huh? Buildings?
Yeah.
Can't smoke.
I'm talking about outside of municipal.
Yeah, you know, we do have staff who continue to engage in at least what I could be smoking a cigarette. Some of them go right outside the building. I don't know if we want to trample with that.
I know, I've heard complaints.
Yeah, we've taken some administrative steps to actually push that away from the building some. We're not using the hundred-foot dimension, I don't think, but.
And you're doing that with your authority to regulate your employees.
Right, right. So we've taken.
Designate for your employees where they can smoke.
Yeah, so if we had a visitor here and they wanted to smoke next to the building, they'd be able to do it. It's our employees that are actually current, which is the vast majority of the smoking. And it was in response to some of the complaints that we had received from employees as well, so.
So, Mr. Best Pitch, with Elmwood Park, though, that's different, right? Because they're not supposed to be smoking in Elmwood Park during concerts and stuff?
They're not supposed to smoke, and there's signs designated that you cannot smoke below the sidewalk that's behind all the tiers. In other words, in the tiered section of the amphitheater.
Uh huh.
Smoking is not permitted.
Right.
But from the sidewalk behind that, and then the, sort of the hillside, that's on the other side, so that smoking is okay there. But that's, we already got that through.
Yeah.
Actually.
Now we're talking about other parks.
Thanks to the incoming Speaker of the House, we got that through a couple of years ago, I guess.
Yeah, for some reason, that's why I was thinking, I was like, didn't we just say no smoking? But you're on to parks now and other areas.
Right, right.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Best Pitch.
That's okay. I haven't gotten any word back from Mr. Pretty on this legislation relating to the application of parole statutes and relating to limitation on mandatory minimum punishment. They were waiting for the report from the Crime Commission. If Senator Edwards introduces legislation, I think at that point, we could determine that we want to express support for that. But I don't think we're really in a position to keep this in our program at this point, because we just, I don't think the Crime Commission has made their report yet. So I'm going to suggest that we strike number four, which makes number five, number four. And which is adopt legislation to make the Virginia Museum of Transportation official state agency. Senator Edwards' office indicated that they will introduce that legislation, so I don't think we need to add anything else to that. Six now becomes five. And this one, I wanted to give Mr. Cobb a chance to comment on this and then ask, acknowledge, I guess, Mr. Collins' work on coming up with the language, suggested language for this. So, Joe, you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Mr. Best Pitch. Yes, this has come before us in different iterations, but this is essentially to ask the General Assembly to approve a tax credit for including AEDs in new and used vehicles. And in conversation with Jack Perkins, who's the executive director of the Compress and Shock Foundation, who we've been working with on this, wanting to make this a statewide effort. But because their roots are here in Roanoke, it made sense for us to champion this as a locality. In conversation with him and then with our city attorney's office, Mr. Collins graciously worked on a draft legislation because one of the challenges that the foundation was running into in trying to get support for this bill was not having any kind of preliminary bill to present. And so, David, would you be willing to come up and just speak briefly to what this contains within it? While he's coming up, I will say that Mr. Perkins had an opportunity to present this to the Virginia EMS Association, which is the most important state medical association in regard to collaboration on supporting this. And he did so on Friday. And they offered initial support to this, which is very encouraging. But thank you, David, for being here today.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Whiteboy, members of council. And thank you, Councilman Cobb. Just to follow up on what you had said earlier, Dr. Perkins has explained to us that for people suffering cardiac arrest, time is critical, seconds literally matter. And I learned something new. The survival rate for persons that are suffering from cardiac arrest is only five percent. And that is because persons are not able to make it to the hospital in time or to a location that has an automated external defibrillator within enough time to revive and resuscitate the heart. So, Dr. Perkins would like to, as an incentive, to encourage the proliferation of automated external defibrillators to have a tax credit available to offset the motor vehicle sales and use tax with the purchase of a new or used car. And with that in mind, we looked at section fifty-eight point one, thirty-three, nine point thirteen, which would be a new section to the section of the state code that authorizes income tax credits on individual tax returns. And essentially, what the legislation does is it would provide a tax credit of up to $1,200 for the purchase of a new automated external defibrillator. And the idea, and the idea would be that these AEDs, as they're known, would be kept in motor vehicles at all times. So that if someone is suffering from a cardiac arrest, if they were fortunate enough to be near a vehicle that had one, aid could be given in time. So that's essentially the genesis of this legislation and what is hoped to be accomplished by this. More AEDs available in motor vehicles to help save lives when literally seconds count. And I'm happy to take any questions on that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Did you have anything? Thank you, and I'm going to ask you about another one when we get to here in a couple of minutes. So if you don't mind hanging with us a little bit. Does anybody have any questions on this one? You know, I just have to say that I think the makeup of the General Assembly come next January may be a little bit more inclined to support tax breaks for folks, so maybe we'll get this one through. Thank you. Okay, so now number six becomes the $10 million for Innovation Corridor that Delegate Rasool is expected to introduce. Comments or questions on that one? Seven is $200 million for a reimagining of Catawba Hospital, which, again, Delegate Rasool indicates he intends to pursue. So then now number nine becomes number eight. And again, I just can't tell you how much I appreciate, Mr. Collins, your work on getting this language together and also the other conversations that you've had relative to this proposal. So if you could kind of let everybody know where things stand with that.
Thank you, Mr. Best Pitch. This proposal is intended to help facilitate the conveyance of tax sale properties to land banks. City council authorized TAP to perform the entities of a land bank a couple of years ago. And although land banks can use any means that you or I could use to acquire properties, one of the primary mechanisms that TAP wants to use, if not the primary mechanism, is to have tax sale property that the city is considering tax selling to be conveyed directly to, there's a provision in the state code, normally tax sale properties have to be sold at public auction. But there is a section of the state code that allows property meeting certain criteria to be conveyed directly to the locality in lieu of being sold at public auction. And the idea was for the city to acquire property in this manner and then convey it to the land bank. Some of the risk, though, in that process is that that would involve the city being included in the chain of title. And it would also require the city to have to go through a public hearing before it could convey the property to the land bank. So rather than, the statute now currently provides that property can be conveyed from the locality, I'm sorry, to be conveyed from the special commissioner appointed to the court, by the court, to the locality. We are proposing that that language be changed to also allow the special commissioner to convey it directly to the land bank instead, so that localities would not be involved in the chain of titles. And we would not have to go through the time and expense of having a public hearing and advertising it and the additional cost that that would incur. So that is the general idea behind that proposal.
And we had understood that there might be some effort in the General Assembly in the opposite direction to make it, that somebody may be considering legislation that would make it harder to deal with these properties. So there was some thought about, well, should we even put this in if that's the direction things are going to go? And then we thought, well, it's better to have both sides out there for folks, right? So we'll put this in and hope that there can be some discussion on this. And again, can you talk a little bit about your connection with Angela Penn and her work on this?
Sure. Well, the, well, let me address what you mentioned earlier about the concerns in the opposite direction.
Sure, sure.
That was because of a report that the Boyd Graves Conference had issued, which essentially believed that the tax sale process had become too easy. And they were recommending that amendments be made to the statute to sort of reverse the clock back to a time when there were more steps that had to be complied with. But in the Boyd Graves Conference report, a lot of things were omitted that actually protect the property owners. And a local government attorney's committee issued a response to that detailing all of the things that have not been omitted, how reversing those changes would actually make it more difficult to sell and be more costly for the localities. And as a result of that report, the Boyd Graves Conference has decided to postpone its recommendations pending further study. So that's very encouraging.
Okay, well, good. Thank you for sharing that. I wasn't aware that had developed, but that's great.
And the city and TAP have been working together on this proposal as well, just to make it more efficient for these properties to be conveyed to the land bank.
Well, and Ms. Penn is involved in a statewide consortium of agencies that are doing land banks around Virginia. And she's shared this with them. They're going to support it. So, you know, we always try to find, just as with the AEDs, let's get some statewide organization involved. Let's try to get other localities involved. So I think we're moving ahead with that as well. Thank you. Thank you very much, David.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Best Pitch.
So that priority is now number eight. And I'll add the charter amendments, number nine, on the circuit court clerk, and number 10 on the council election dates. Put those in and send that back out to you. Mr. Kathy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for being able to join us.
I'd like to be here. I'm sorry I'm late. I have another agenda at three thirty, but I'm here.
I appreciate it so much. I know how.
There's anything I can do to help, but any more time, please let me in.
Well, I think our education policy and legislative priorities are pretty well set at this point. I will share with the committee that the school board has approved the hiring of, I think it's Dr. Alan Seabird.
Yes, sir.
Who was formerly the superintendent of schools for the city of Salem. And his position is?
His position is entitled constituent services and government relations officer.
Right. So I emailed each of you the paper that he has come up with, which he sort of reformatted what we've had so far a little bit, but then added on these points, key points at that, which don't need to be part of our legislative package. But certainly, I think we need to be aware of those in any discussions that we might have and also make sure that our legislative liaison and advantage strategies are aware of those points.
On behalf of the chair and the vice chair, I thank you very much for accepting it. I think Dr. Seabird worked real hard on it and the committee did, and we're pleased to put it forward.
Okay.
And Chairman Best Pitch, and Mr. Kathy might also want to hear this. Working with Ron Jordan and School Division to, for the School Division to engage his services, it's just, he's more than willing to. It's just a matter of mapping out that scope of services.
Right.
So.
Anybody have anything further to bring to the committee? Mr. Cobb.
I know that last year during the legislative session, legislators were, had a limit on how many bills they could introduce. Have we heard any information on whether that's going to carry forward as the practice? Or is that still kind of up in the air right now?
In my conversations with Ron Jordan, he has not heard of a bill limitation. He's keeping his ear to the ground to see that affects, of course, how we address the charter changes.
Right.
Because I think that other measures, those are viewed very much like housekeeping.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that there are other, we change the priorities.
Thank you.
But thus far, we have not heard that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't expect that to happen.
No.
But sometimes people in Richmond surprise you, believe it or not. Okay, if that's it, then I will adjourn this meeting of the Legislative Committee and City Council can move to the closed meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Lisa. Oh, we're going to meet on December 6th. And we're, have you already sent the invitations to the legislators? Yeah, the legislators have been invited to join us at that meeting. So we will go from there.
What time will it be?
Can we do that at nine thirty? Actually, I guess I leave that up to the agenda committee.
Once we start figuring out what is on the agenda.
Yeah.
I know they'll need to know.
The agenda committee can let you know as soon as you can, Mr. Cobb, let us know. And then we can inform everyone when that's going to be. Usually, we try to shoot for nine thirty.
Yeah, and, you know, we'll try to get them in here early and then be able to move and stuff, so.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Best Pitch.
At the first man who killed Joseph Rosenbaum, who was unarmed, provoking him to come after Rittenhouse. Binger pointed to expert testimony that Rittenhouse shot Rosenbaum four times with his AR-15 semi-automatic rifle.
He could have chosen to stop after the first shot, after the second shot, after the third shot, and assess whether or not there was still a need to keep firing.
Defense attorneys say Rosenbaum had his hand on Rittenhouse's rifle, so Rittenhouse was afraid he could grab the gun. Binger says Rosenbaum was incapacitated and falling forward after.